I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Thompson, will you use this in a word?
Let's pray together, guys. Dear great Father, as we enter into a season of blessedness, dear Lord, of time that you smiled down on this planet and give us your Son. We're just thankful, dear Lord, that we had this opportunity to witness this and to feel this joy and feel this love, heaven's, dear Lord, to humble ourselves that we will truly get the true understanding of what you did for us at this time. And, dear Lord, as we go through meeting tonight, as you will guide us through, we'll do the things that we need to do for our children, dear Lord, and to make ways for them to be better adults in their time throughout. We're just thankful, dear Lord, for all the things you do for us. And, dear Lord, as you lead, God protect us, and you forgive us for all of our many shortcomings as we have so many. We pray of your sons, whose grace is holy and amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. At this time, we'd like to welcome all of you here tonight, and we're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Macon County Board of Education held today, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. At this time, we're gonna have a roll call and establish an other board. I am Mary Hooks.
Katie Campbell.
Clinton Boyd.
Elmore Love.
Carrie Thompson.
Let the record show that all board members are present. At this time, we would like a motion to approve the board's agenda for tonight.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the board's agenda with flexibility.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second that we approve the board's agenda with flexibility. And at this time, I'd like to say that we're gonna move the executive session up to, and right after approval of the minutes, the executive session will move to right after the minutes. All right, are there any questions about the agenda? All in favor? Let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, it's been accepted. At this time, we'll have, under approval of the board's agenda, item A, remarks by the board president and members. Any comments at this time?
Good afternoon, I would like to say, I'm proud to see everybody here tonight. It makes me feel real good to see our audience back in here since we haven't had any since last year. I would also like to say, I went to Tuskegee Institute, now Tuskegee Public School. I was so proud to see that we had a band playing the fourth and fifth graders. They really, I wished everybody could have been there just to see what we, Dr. Brooks, had brought into the school and the big, I mean, the musical man, it was just thrill. We have a band now at Tuskegee Public. So I want everybody to know, if you get a chance, go by, look. We need some instruments, if you want to, you can help donate some instruments to the kids 'cause they're really ready to learn the music. And they learn that, I understand, less than four weeks or three weeks, they learn that Christmas carols in that length of time. So I'm just saying, I wish everybody to take the opportunity, help our children around here 'cause they're trying to progress, and we need to keep them in order too, so that they learn. Thank you.
I just wanna say, it's good to see each and every one of you here. And I'm like, Miss Love, in many, many meetings, we have just two or three people in the audience listening to what, the things that we're going through and as Dr. Brooks presented them to us and for us to make decisions on them. But it's good to see you guys here, wanting to know and wanting to feel what's going on in our system. As we are closing one chapter, sad to say, of a very dear friend of mine and a very dear friend to this county's system. We hate to see her leave, but we know, we know that she has to do what's best for her. But I am also looking forward to the new era that is about to get started in welcoming the new superintendent as she comes aboard and works with us and lead, as we work together to do the things that we need to do for our system. It is a joy, it's been a joy to work with Dr. Brooks. The only superintendent I've known since I've been on the board. She's been, and that's unprecedented, guys, you don't have superintendents that long. It's just not, it's just not heard of. They're like preachers, two years and gone. But that's just the way, we've been lucky to have one of her caliber to work and the things that she has accomplished through this system. And I know that then things will continue with the new administration coming in. And we're just thankful that all these things have been great for our system. Thank you.
I would like to say good evening to every one of you that's here today. And I did owe the things that have been said in reference to Dr. Brooks. But I also would like to just give a little shout out to the citizens of Macon County in reference to their support when it came to Veterans Week or Veterans Day. I acknowledge it, I remember several times when we were open up to the public, and the response was tremendous. I received positive feedback coming to me personally to say that, hey, we really appreciate our veterans, and we just want to stimulate this particular atmosphere to where they will always know that through Board of Education and other organizations within the community, we're there in support of all of our veterans. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Like has been already said, I am very excited that we have so many of you out this evening. It's just important that the citizens come out and find out what's going on with the board. I also wanna say to our video audience, we really appreciate the feedback we got from you when we were doing our superintendent search. I think one night, we had over a thousand people onboard. Another night, we had about seven hundred and something. But each night of the interviews was very well participated, and I was just really surprised that so many people would come out. And, you know, although I don't like what COVID has done, but in some ways, it has allowed us to reach out more to the broader community. You know, and thanks for the support that you give to, that you've given to our superintendent, our outgoing superintendent. She has done an outstanding job and often not having everything that she needed to work with. Although I know our new superintendent coming in, please allow her the time to get used to the job. And we're going to do the same thing as a board because she's going to need all of our support. But you know her, she's been in the system for twenty-one years. So it's not somebody that you don't know, that you have to get used to. You know the work that she's already done. So we just ask for your continued support for our new superintendent as well as to our board. You are some, I know sometimes it looks like it's an easy job, but it's a tough job because when you go home, you get calls, sometimes you get calls before you even get to the board meeting. And, and you just have to tread the waters lightly and, you know, find out all of the facts before you make a decision. So we just appreciate your support. And at that, I will say, just stick around to the end of the meeting so we can socialize a bit with you.
All right, tonight is bittersweet for me. Like Mr. Thompson, this is the only superintendent I've had the opportunity to work with. But as a former educator, I can tell you that it is a thrill to meet someone who can stay here past three years. I had, I can't tell you how many superintendents in thirty-one years that I've worked here. So my hat's off to Dr. Brooks, she's done an outstanding job and everything that's been said and more. Don't know how she did it, why she got the energy, but she did it. And we certainly appreciate everything that she's brought to the table. And we're gonna do everything we can to make sure the momentum continues and we carry out the duties of board members and taking care of the children we serve and making sure we make every opportunity possible for them to get a good education, even in a small community. We have some of the brightest and the smartest kids, I see them all the time, and they're doing great things. At this time, we're gonna move right along to item five, approval of the minutes from September twenty-third, October sixteenth, November third, and November eighth. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Madam President, I move that we accept the minutes from November ninth to twenty-third, the tenth to sixteen, eleventh to third, and eleven eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All right, it has been moved in second that we accept these minutes, various minutes listed here. Any questions? All in favor of approving the minutes, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we'll accept a motion to go into executive session to discuss good name and character. Let the record show that no decisions will be made during executive session.
Madam, I'm sorry, Madam President, we need to interrupt you. I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing good name and character.
Second. All right, it's been moved in second that we go into executive session. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
We're gonna entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Madam President, I move that we come out of executive session.
Second. It has been moved in second that we come out of executive session. Let the record show, no decisions were made in the executive session. Are there any questions? All in favor of ending the executive session, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. At this time, we're gonna go back to presentations. Dr. Brooks, are you handling the presentation, or you want me to?
You may handle it.
All right, and the first one up is the Tuskegee Area Chamber of Commerce. That's it.
Thank you. So, well, everybody up here certainly knows who I am, but we're here this evening to recognize you, Dr. Brooks. We feel like you've done an outstanding job as superintendent, and I personally want to thank you for your leadership. And thank you for being a great leader and a great friend. And I am going to turn the microphone over to Robert Vaughn, who is the current president of the chamber. Sure, thank you.
Rather than me give all of my remarks, well, say, everybody's gonna make their remarks available to you because we all, and I will say that the one thing that has been admirable about working both with you as a chamber person but as a consultant for the school system is your fairness to all students and the desire to raise the climate for the students, their environment, and, you know, all of that in a community way. So I don't do my twelve minutes, I'm gonna let Jared, the incoming president, remark as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Good evening, everybody. I just wanna say it's such a pleasure to be here this evening to honor your Dr. Brooks. We consider you to be our hometown She-Ra. On behalf of the chamber, we just want to express our appreciation for your leadership and dedication to the Macon County school system over the years. And our boys and girls are lucky to have you as an example of excellence.
You said enough.
Anybody else like to say anything?
Sure.
Charlie, within twenty minutes.
Within twenty minutes, that's all? Well, I just really wanna say congratulations on the job, well done. The toughest jobs in the world, I guarantee you, but you did well, congratulations. Dr. Brooks, thank you for your service. Thank you for those things that you've done for the community and for the kids and the neighborhood as well. When I see you, I think about my wife, you having the plenty of these and the other beat dresses on and everything, working with the kids, appreciate you. And I wish you much love.
Dr. Brooks, we were on that road together for a long time. I remember you as a principal, how good you were as a principal, and you've been an even better superintendent. We hate to lose you, I've told you that before and I'll tell you again. But I think that your, your following superintendent is gonna be real good too, and I know you're gonna help him. And we look forward to that, and we look forward to seeing the next thing that you do 'cause you're too young and vivacious to quit. So we know something else is coming. But thank you so much for your years of service.
Dr. Brooks, I think it really hits me tonight that, you know, we want to be connected like we used to be. But I know we're still gonna be connected, just in a different way. We appreciate all that you've done for the students, the community. And, you know, what can I say? We appreciate, I love you, and wish the best for you and your endeavors, and look forward to working with Dr. Williams.
I just thought it was a serious. Because I've seen so many good things about you, you're such a great person, besides just being a great superintendent. You know, I appreciate working with you the whole while, for years, we was doing it in Family Magazine. And it's just been a pleasure, I hate to lose you too, but I know I'm getting another good superintendent with Dr. Williams, you know, so this school system is going to thrive and survive thanks to your great leadership.
Yes, I really wanna say that no one has said, that God has great things for you. And I know whatever you do or wherever you go, you will be successful because you're a beautiful person and you have done great things for our community. And thank you so much, and God bless you.
And speaking of beauty, I guess this is where you're at the drum roll.
All right.
This is a lovely, now, master piece.
Oh, wow. All those times I said, bugging you about the image, yeah. Do you have anything to say? Can we get you to stand by?
Oh, absolutely. Wow.
Say it, Pastor.
Wow, wow. Well, you know, I usually am not short of words, but these last few days, I have been. And so I have to say that there are some things that are just God winks. God winked and he brought me home. God winked and I ended up serving as principal of Tuskegee Institute Middle School, one of the greatest experiences of my life. God winked and I moved to central office, thinking that I was going to be on the track to be a college professor, that's what my career path was. And God winked and the Macon County Board of Education asked me to step in as superintendent. And because it was a God wink and I prayed about it, I said yes. And here's a twelve years later, good and bad, ups and downs, triumphs and losses, we have done some great work together. And it's been because of collegiality, collaboration, great friends, great support, and being in what we call the four six, my hometown. Born in John Andrew, raised here, living here, and someday, far, 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 far away being buried here, this is my home. And I love it, through and through, with all my being. So thanks to every one of you. And Senator Clay keeps saying, what are you gonna do next, what are you gonna do next? Well, I know that we're gonna look for every resource we can find to continue to elevate our county, our community, and our kids. Macon County is a gold mine, and we're going to mine the gold home. So thank you all so much, this is beautiful, and I will praise you.
Would you please also thank Terry Brooks for allowing us to have you, and more than we deserve. And he has been not just a man's man, he's been a woman's man.
I will share that with him, thank you, thank you so much, thank you all, and you know, I wanna get my hugs. Thank you so much, thank you.
Sisters of Macon County, I come before you at this time on a request of continuation. But let me tell you something first, to, kind of, stick a pin in this thing. As a lad growing up in Macon County, Tuskegee, Brown Street, I think I was about ten years old when a particular employee of the school district persisted that I be in the presence of her, the things that she was doing. And on this certain day, I recall very firmly that had it not been that I was down by the creek painting rocks and bricks and things that she was doing, I might have saw or been a part of a youth tragedy. Several friends that we used to run, run with, one lost their life that day. And it was because of this lady, saw something in me that persisted that I was there that day. And I tried to get out of, you know, our kids are, but I recall looking back, and it set a mark for me. And I saw something in her, how she gave conception of her own resources to help us on Brown Street and throughout the school district. And her name was Mrs. Anne Buchanan, which was the sister of the son of P. Harris. And I made that to say this, I guess that's why I fight so hard for children in this district the way I do. Everybody got their own skill set and their way of combating different issues. So I tried to relate mine to something I learned throughout the military and through open aquatic, where I became a pretty proficient technician, especially with Nissan. And there's a Nissan story I'm gonna tell you a little later. But I came through the school district, graduated here, played sports, and came back home, and eventually I had a second child. And he started school and Head Start in ninety-nine. And that thrust me into where I am today. And with Head Start, we accomplished several good things. Therefore, leading me to Washington Republic. When he entered there, I was with the PTA for several years. And it was around two thousand and five when I had become the president. I had been in the organization two years, and they saw fit to elect me president. So I rode in Mobile, not knowing what to expect, but knew there was a lot of things that I had a desire for and helped change it and motivate this community. Lord behold, in Mobile, there was two warriors there that I hadn't known of, but they approached me and asked if I would serve as the council president. And I told them, you know, let me think about it and let me pray about it. And I did. But those two people that approached me that day, or that evening, it was evening, I think it was, was not other than a board member here, Mrs. Katie Campbell, and, uh...
Mary, Mary.
Yes, Mary Hooks. And the both of them, it just shook me up sometime when I called his name because of how close we had become. And I promised them that I would do the best I could. And there was one thing that the state had asked was a plan of action. And that was two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, I put together, I prepared about things, and some of the things I said I wanted to do was to increase the membership or in about ten percent over the next two years to a hundred percent in the school district. We almost made that accomplishment, we got up to ninety-seven percent. The next thing was that I fell in love with reflection, one of PTA's, National PTA always program that deals with the arts. And I promised the state, or what I told them in this plan, that we was gonna be one of the best programs and have an increase in student participation each year. We did that. And the other thing was to provide quarterly, what, two trainings a year, a school calendar, prefer the one in the fall and one in the spring, we did that. So, here recently, back here in March of twenty-one, I got a call, I was at home, you know, like most of us were, and it was from the state PTA. And I said, what do they want with me? So I listened to what they had to say, and I told them this, I said, well, let me pray about it 'cause I'm going back over this same track again, now let me pray about this. So I kinda got the nod, the doc sent a nod from the father upstairs, I kinda put together some things. Okay, thank you. And to make a long story short, we created one of the best PTA programs in the state. And we had all of our kids, they went to the state for several activities, Dr. Brooks and the board, and everybody was there. So what I'm trying to say is that I wanna ask for extension for Washington Republic to continue its work and to rebuild this program. As you may know, that I would locate units up down. I was meant able to get three of them back up, and I was pushing, 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 and then the spirits said, Robert, slow it down. You can't drive people that way, you have to kinda let them come to it. So that's, that's the approach I'm taking. We have three units up now, we need three more. And so by the end of the school year, I hope to have those three, and we'll have a hundred percent. But I need the, what was it, old PTA, the trailer there, that's the community center. And we've done great things out of that with the tornado, everything served the families. Victor Land made people, we served over three hundred and fifty families. So I wanna continue that process at the school. We were not allowed, the new president, who is Dr. Bowman Tilden, to take over. It was because of, we had things in place, but it was important, I made this decision. That's why I take full responsibility, like I told the state, for the fall of where we are now. But that don't mean we're gonna stay there, we're gonna come back stronger than we were before with this. I can see it, and we are on our way. We have a straight, a good program this summer. So Dr. Brooks attended, and we have same three schools that are registered now there this summer, and so we got to get the other three. So we have no problem with that, we're gonna work on that. And what I wanna do is say that the roof was leaking because no one's in it. So I had to repair it, I repaired that out of my own funds. So right now, I'm waiting on some resources to come in that we can open it up and if it's God's will, the plan, if, 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 if we were, we should be able to... if it's God's will, the plan, if, 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 if I could were, we should be able to have another ribbon cutting for the community center at Washington Public. All right, so that's that, with that. And the Washington Public School building itself is on the campus ground. So, we decided years ago, along with Mrs. Christina Boyd, I approached her because we was a conduit for her Austin degree. And she said, yes, she was favorable. And then we got caught up into different things. I'll tell you what happened. One homecoming, Dr. Brooks came to me and said, Mr. Johnson, they got us. I'm saying, got what, Doc? And come to find out, they had broken into the building, destroyed all of the commodes, faceboards, cut the power wire, and pulled all the wires out. So, that was devastating because we was planning on creating class podcasts in November of that particular year. So, it's been a downward spiral from there on. But like most people, I'm determined to continue to fight this battle and to keep going forward. So, with that said, I request that you all look at my extension and ask if there, and one thing I would like to have, if you grant it to me, a revert clause that I don't use it for educational purposes, that it reverts back to the Board of Education. It was, it was, it's two thousand ten, that year, when the state came in and said that we had to do something with our school bus. And at that time, Dr. Brooks, I never saw her like I saw her that day. And so, I went to her, I told her, Doc, I said, well, Doc, you know, I'm gonna do everything I can in my power to help make this better. And I did that. But I want to say, the Booker T. Washington High School Unit of Lunch and Committee would like to recognize Dr. Jacqueline Brooks. Thank you for over ten years of academic, physical, and athletic stability in the Macon County school system. Your leadership and dedication to students led directly to the first ever football playoff in BTW history, given this day November the sixteenth. Thank you so much. Dr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam President.
Dr. Brooks, don't get too comfortable, okay? Let's come back over to this beautiful portrait.
It needs a little bit.
Do I need the mic?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Uh, Dr. Brooks, there's one organization in this county and in this town that sets you up above all of the grants. And you are one of the finest women that we know. And I have been asked to read this short citation to you. The plaque is forthcoming, as well as another small token. "The sorrows and doves of Alpha Xi Zeta Chapter, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated extend sisterly and heartfelt congratulations to Dr. Jacqueline A. Brooks upon her retirement as the dynamic and competent superintendent of the Macon County School District. Your departure with pride, dignity, charm, and academic excellence will forever strive and survive among us." Dr. Brooks, I just want to say that as a Zeta, we are so proud that you are also a Zeta. You exemplify all of our characteristics, and we are just so proud to have a superintendent that we can call our very own. And this is not the permanent one, but this is the one that, uh, uh, facsimile of the one that you will receive from us.
Thank you so much. I am proud to be a Zeta woman. When I just went to college, I was not even familiar with Zeta Phi Beta. But when I saw they were women of finer womanhood, I knew it was the place for me. All right, thank you.
Dr. Brooks, last year this time, I thought we had planned, and it turned out this month just kind of crept up on us. And before you know it, here we are. We are so proud to have had a homegrown, Miss Zeta, a homegrown young woman to come and lead our system. And I'm proud because I had an opportunity to work with you and to see how genuine you are and how dedicated you are to everything you do. And you tried to do it, I mean, the feel-good of some of you, remember that. She did feel-good things that made people feel proud to have been a part of the system, naming athletic venues after our coaches and so forth. She's been responsible for more than ten million dollars in grants to the system. And something that was near and dear to me, you made dual enrollment real. I played at it, but you made it real. I can't tell you what it's gonna be like, but we're gonna look forward to moving on with Dr. Williams. We know you're gonna be there. She's had all kinds of things, say, she's running for public office. She's gonna be president of some college. But I said, I don't think so. I think she's gonna stay and work with us here in Macon County. But anyway, the plaque reads, and it has our little emblem, she'll be proud of that. Outstanding Service Award presented to Jacqueline Austin Brooks, and Superintendent of Education. For twenty-five years of service and dedic-, uh, loyal and dedicated service, outstanding leadership, and sustained pursuit of excellence as principal, director of federal programs, and superintendent of education have positively impacted the students, parents, staff, and faculty of our schools. And congratulations and continued success in your future personal and career goals. And this comes from the Macon County Board of Education. And it's from yours truly, Mary Hooks, President, Katie Campbell, Vice President, Eleanor Love, Carrie Thompson, and Clinton Board members. Thank you so much for your service, and you outshine the lights by staying with us, and I appreciate that. And in addition, the corner in the back is yours. I hope that it looks good in your, in your home.
We're getting awarded now.
Well, it won't give anyone until about Saturday. I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you so much. Just there, I have this one thing just to tell the public, thank you so much. Where are my gentleman?
Thank you.
So, I'll tell you this quick thing. Someone asked me, you've been, said to me, you've been superintendent longer than anyone in the history of Macon County. Well, that set me on a challenge to find out if it was so. Well, it isn't. And so, it's so important for us to know our own history. So, pretty soon, I have Dorothy McDonald, who's helping me. She is going to the Montgomery, the Alabama Archives, rather, in Montgomery. She is digging through big books and finding the history of the Macon County Board of Education. But I'll tell you two quick snippets. First, there was another newspaper, the Tuskegee Messenger, not just the Tuskegee News. And apparently, at one time, we had a city school system. Who knew? And we had a superintendent who served over thirty years in the nineteen thirties. So, stay tuned. As soon as we can pull all of this history together, we will let you know so that we can know and our students can know their very own history.
We're talking about in our lifetime here.
I know, I know, but I just want us to know all of our history. Thank you so much, Dr. Brooks. Hey, Madam President, members of the board, I have a few items for the superintendent's report. And the first item, Mrs. Hooks, will you please remain standing? The first item is, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce to you the person you know as the Macon County Board of Education President, Miss Mary Hooks, and her additional role, which is as the president-elect of the Alabama Association of School Boards for the entire state. And she got a new business card today, so if you would like one, she will happily pass one out. But she is on the front lines of helping make policy and shape policy to affect our boys and girls in the state of Alabama. So, we congratulate her for that. The second thing in the superintendent's report was some good news that I received a couple of weeks ago, and most of you probably received it in an email. For years, we have been trying to get a grant through the FAA, Federal Aviation Agency. And probably a year ago, I worked with General Sparrow, Red Tails, and Arisma to write and submit a grant for an aviation mechanics training program because, yes, airplanes have to be repaired, they have to be fixed, and they have to be extraordinarily exemplary in their safety. And we received news that we were awarded that grant. It's been a long time coming. And so, I have passed that information on to the superintendent select, but it will be all of our responsibility to make sure we get that grant off the ground because it includes training and jobs, which is what we're all about here in Macon County. The third thing, Mr. Thompson, as you know, County Commissioner Mike Barry, you, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Vaughn, worked very hard trying to find some space for Nodasoga to be able to get a baseball, a softball field, and a track. Several years ago, Nodasoga had a state winter-up team at the state track meet, and there was just no way to do it. Each property owner surrounding Nodasoga on each side was not interested in selling, or they were interested in selling at a very unaffordable price. The deal that was sought after was to have a land swap, where some property in the South Macon area that is largely unused was swapped for property in the Nodasoga area that would be across the street from Nodasoga and could be used for future projects. The land owner has signed his deed to swap the land with the Macon County Board of Education. And we can receive the project here. We are very excited. We anticipate having a groundbreaking ceremony on December twenty-seventh or soon thereafter. And we will let you know based on Mr. Dudley's appointments and things that he has to do. We also are very excited that we have approval to begin pouring our track at BTW. As you know, you did recent approvals for that. The state has approved that. The surveyors have been out, and so they are ready to continue that work. We also have final approval for the baseball and softball field at Booker T. Washington High School. The project sign is likely to go up between December twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth, and we will actually be contacting the chamber to help us with the ribbon cutting or groundbreaking potentially for these facilities that are needed so much by our students. Number five, as you know, the state requires us to have a reading coach in each of our K-three schools. Sadly, our reading coach retired from Deborah Cannon Wolf Elementary School, and we were under the gun with attempting to find a reading coach. In fact, Dr. Williams and I received a recommendation from the principal last night and finally took time to read it this afternoon. Hence, you have a late recommendation in the personnel section of appointments. As we go forth, starting January one, we're supposed to have this person in place. If not, our state ARI funds are threatened. The second reading coach position that we must have in place is a dyslexia and dyscalculia specialist, a person who helps students who read letters in reverse and has other, and have other reading difficulties. And we also have a transfer recommendation for that in your packet with no change in contract. Number six, we seem not to be able to get away from COVID-19. As we learn to live with it, we continue to get various, to get various Greek alphabets coming to us. The latest one is Omicron, and the superintendent select has indicated that she plans to meet with the advisory team, and specifically Dr. Stafford, so that she can get a handle on plans for January, and she will notify the public about that. The Alabama Literacy Act, you may know that the governor plans to delay the act based on the dismal performance by students, which we, as educators, all knew would happen under the mental duress and missing school for such a long period of time. The politicians have now figured that out. But we're moving full force ahead in Macon County schools with after-school reading programs, intervention specialists in our schools, and a lot of other activities and many more that the new superintendent in her vision will bring to you. Again, I would like to give special thanks to everyone in this room for the support that you have given me and my family through the years. And unlike the street avenue, street committee, what is it called? Street group says, I don't have a big house in Auburn if I do. I'm asking for the address so I can go see where it is. I am not running for public office, especially a state House seat, absolutely not. I think the supermajority is super right now, and we could better serve trying to get a statewide office in our party. And so, again, special thanks. I'm right here in the community. I'll be at five oh six South Maple Street if you need me. And I think everybody has my number. If you don't, it's three three nine zero five one two. If you see a grant or any type of resource that we need to work on, I am ready to go to work. And so, retirement is really transition and repurposing. And I told you, I'm leaving two precious commodities in your hands. And so, every morning, I'll still have to get in my car and trek to Carver and trek to BTW and drop them off. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks. And Dr. Brooks' last day is December thirty-first. And you heard the dates that she called out. She's gonna be busy up until midnight, I guess, December thirty-first. Thank you so much. The next item is educational services, a MOU with East Central Mental Health.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, East Central Mental Health has tried on several occasions to offer a behavior specialist to go into the schools. And several years ago, we had an MOU, and we had a behavior specialist at George Washington Carver Elementary School. This time, they are offering one for us at Booker T. Washington High School. Dr. McClainey, who works with Student Services, shared that with the senior staff and what the benefits would be. Therefore, at this time, the Superintendent of Education is recommending approval of an MOU with East, East Central Mental Health.
Well, ma'am, as you've heard, it's a superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I recommend that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the MOU for the East Alabama Health Service, in the, in the MOU.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that we accept the superintendent's recommendation regarding the MOU with East Central Mental Health. Are there any questions? Dr. Brooks, is this gonna be, is it gonna be part-time or full-time?
Uh, they are looking at full-time. I will, I will be completely frank with you. It is very difficult to recruit a full-time person in this area, but the goal is full-time.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion that is known by the side of the law? The vote is unanimous. Personnel services?
Madam President, would you like to do them combined or on that side?
We could combine them.
Okay. The Superintendent of Education recommends approval- The Superintendent of Education recommends approval of the following personnel services: Resolution for the late Donna Yvette Smith Taylor, resignation of a teacher at Tuskegee Public School and a cafeteria worker at George Washington Carver Elementary School, appointments of a new teacher and a reading coach, extended-day contracts at various sites, and a transfer of an assistant principal to a reading coach to which she has agreed.
Well, members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding Personnel Services, Items A through E. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, Madam President, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Personnel Services. Are there any questions?
Yes. On the transfer, Item E?
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be a change in salary?
No, it is allowable.
Thank you.
Any other question?
It is a A sustained.
On A? Okay. There's an extension on...
Resolutions.
On the resolution. All right. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion that it be known by the side of the law? All right, because unanimous except for one person standing. Business Services?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Macon County Board of Education accounts payable and financial report as of September 30, 2021. Accounts payable and payroll annual budget is $45,285,414 in expenses. Accounts payable expenditures for the month of September was $3,616,742.27. Payroll expenditures for the month was $1,787,150.77. Expenses year-to-date was $31,994,842.27. Seventy-one percent of the budget has been spent. General fund ending fund balance was $2,171,503.63. And yes, that does give us our one-month operating fund balance at the end of September. The month of October, accounts payable and payroll budget, annual budget, is $41,408,648.89. Monthly, $3,450,720.74. Accounts payable expenditures for the month was $348,567.42. Payroll expenditures for the month was $1,947,51.14. Expenses to date was $2295,618.66. Six percent of the budget has been spent. General fund ending fund balance was $1,515,990.16. And yes, that gives us one-month operating balance at the end of October.
You've heard the CSFO's report on the Business Services Accounts Payable and General Fund Ending Fund Balance. Is there a motion to accept her report pending audit?
Madam President, I move that we send the CSFO to the board.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the Business Services Report. Are there any questions?
I do. If she would repeat the accounts payable amount for September 2021, it looks like my number looks different than what you read, or did you read it updated?
I might have been updated.
Okay.
That was some of our bond payments that weren't paid during the year that we paid in September. That's why the money is so high. It's debt service. That wasn't booked to the books, and we booked them at the end of September.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion that it be known by the side of the law?
Aye.
Is unanimous? Reconciliation?
And my, Dr. Cox, we reconcile to the general ledger as of September 2021 and October 31st, 2021.
Is there a motion to approve reconciliation of bank statements?
I approve.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept Item C, reconciliation of bank statements to the general ledger. Any questions? All in favor that it be known by the side of the law?
Aye. Madam President, may I ask the CSFO to please give you a tax situation that we found out about where we should reclaim some funds? Natalie, can you share that information about the?
The utility tax?
Yes, the sales tax.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We, Dr. Brooks actually discovered when she was reviewing the bills that we were paying taxes on utilities, and we are a tax exempt. And we talked to the utility board, and they are working on, you know, getting us a refund.
So how long has this been going on?
I think ever since I've been here. Twenty years. And I think it can go back thirty. You know, back how many?
Probably fifty years.
Yeah. Yes, it can go back three, but when you talk to the attorney, see, you know, if there's any other three you can see.
How did you discover the problem?
Well, you know that thing called assumption? How when you look at the bills and you look at your totals and you look at what you pay? And so when, I just pull samples. And so normally, I pull samples. I pull AT&T. I pull, who is it that I pulled? I pull Spire Gas. They're always, you know, zero when I look at them. But this time, I pulled a different utility bill. And I looked and I said, "This has some numbers by it." So I went and got Natalie, went and got the accountant, and I said, "Now, I don't think numbers are supposed to be here by the tax. Have the numbers always been here?" And they said, "Yes, we've always paid tax to the utility company." And so then I went and pulled all the utility bills and all of the cell phones and everything, and they were all zeroed out except for one particular company. And so we've been in conversation with the company and with the state, and we were told to gather our tax-exempt forms. And what we are understanding now is that we might be able to go back three years, but we're not sure. We'll be getting in touch with Attorney Bennett. And the utility company has been working beautifully with us. And we even had a discussion about Tuskegee University. Tuskegee University is a semi-private institution. They are not under the same tax-exempt status as the school system, so we should not be paying any sales tax. So just what I calculated, you know, for a short period of time, I had already come up with $25,000. So I think it'll be a pretty sizable amount that we can, that you'll be able to put toward, you know, a defined project.
Thank you. Item D? Permission to let bids for gasoline for Macon County school buses and vehicles?
Board members, as you know, this was a recent discovery. Our audit manager, Tammy, retired, and so we received a new audit manager this year. And so in him pulling contracts, he pulled our gasoline consortium that we have with several other agencies, and he indicated to us that that needed to be rebid. And so we are going ahead and trying to get permission to let bids. We did also talk to him about some existing state contracts for gas. The issue with the existing state contracts, though, are that they are just for certain agencies, and they might not allow us to continue in the consortium. And so we really want to continue in the consortium, and so he advised us that the best way to do that is to just go ahead and let bids. Now, I'm not sure what that would mean with the current crisis, you know, where they are. But in order to comply with the state examiner's office, we're going to have to do that. So the Superintendent of Education is recommending that you allow the incoming superintendent, it won't be me, but that you allow bids to be taken, and the CSFO and incoming superintendent will go through that process and make sure that it is done to fidelity. So again, the recommendation is permission to allow bids to be taken for bus and vehicle fees.
All right, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that we accept the superintendent's recommendation. Are there questions?
Yes. Currently, how many members do we have in our consortium?
Currently, we have the Macon County School System, the Police Department, UBT, the city. We have also had...
Do we have a Housing Authority?
No, the Housing Authority did not enter, but the Housing Authority wants to enter. And we have also talked with...
MCCR?
MCCR.
Macon County Ward Authority.
Macon County Ward Authority is there, yes. We don't have the other county vehicles like the Sheriff's Department or any of them.
And I thought that they were there, is the city?
The city police department is there, yes. And, you know, we're billed separately. We have our own separate cars, and so everybody handles their business well and it is worked very well. And as I said, it was when we got the new audit manager that he said he felt that we weren't in compliance, even though we had a consortium, we had all of the signed papers and contracts. He said he felt it needed to be bid, so that's why we're asking bids to be let. And so we're going to also talk to those agencies. I know they're not under the same requirements as the county to have their books examined by the state examiners. The county is, but the city might do their own independent. Who do we have, any city people here? I think you can get your own auditor, I believe, to review your books, so.
Did the current, the new auditor say how often we should let the bids?
He said the contract can be for up to four years, and then you can have a clause in there where it's extended an additional two, which would be a total of a six-year period. But after that six years, then it should be rebid again. And so we'll make sure that that information is relayed. He shared that with the CSFO already in the exit conference, so she's aware, and she will make sure that that's relayed, and the superintendent select is aware of that as well.
Now, we have a six-year term. Is that the reason that he did the four and two?
No, it has nothing to do with board terms. It is actually just constitutional requirements for bids and contracts.
No, and the reason I ask that is because usually your contract term coincides with the term of office. A lot of boards have a four, you know, their members run every four years, so they can only contract for four years. We have six years, and so it is connected. But, you know, that may not be why he said.
Well, with the law he showed me from the manual is the law for every board. And what I'm saying is every board doesn't have six-year terms. So there may be some connection, but it wasn't apparent because this same law, if a board has some members with a four-year term, it still applies. That's what we were giving.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Dr. Brooks, in reference to, you mentioned the audit finding on the gasoline situation that was mentioned and shared with us. By what you have come up with, that have rectified and cleared the way for what?
That will rectify that finding. However, audits are done in arrears, okay? The auditors are, what, two years behind? I think they were two years behind. So in other words, because they're gonna, what year would they be doing when they come in?
2021, that's 1920.
So that was 1920 they did. 1920. 2020 they did. So they'll be doing 2021. So because we're not correcting it until 2022, he could. We're hoping he won't, but he could cite us again.
That's what I was concerned about, because I remember that big thing.
He could cite us again for that same thing, even though we have a corrective action in place for it. And as I said, in my entire term as superintendent, previous terms, that had never been a question, consideration, or finding. So I was really taken by surprise and tried to, you know, argue my way out of it.
And the next auditor may not even take that one.
But we think he's gonna be the audit manager for us for probably the next ten years. So we're going to have to learn each auditor, even though they come with very objective criteria, they still have certain idiosyncrasies that they come with and things that they particularly look at. So I went back and asked him. In fact, that was one of the other things, the way I got on the utility bill, even looking further. I asked him to explain to me then why we have to bid gasoline for the car, but we don't have to bid gasoline for the propane tank. I need to understand the differences. And so he tried to give me those laws as well. And so those laws are very cumbersome, very confusing. And so it's a lot of on-the-job learning with those kinds of things. But a lot of times, you made the mistake before the finding comes, and that's unfortunate.
All right, if there are no more questions, all in favor of the motion that it be known by the side of the law?
Aye.
Opposeds? So it's unanimous, Dr. Brooks? Item E, approval of ESSR budgets for expenditures? We've already approved the budget, but we need to approve the expenditures?
Well, what we did was throughout the year, we have brought line items from the budget, but not the total ESSR application. And our timeline, as you see, expires sooner than we wanted to with these funds. These are our COVID-19 funds. These funds terminate with the end of the FY '23 school year. And so it was an infusion of money, but it's a limited time that we can spend it. So with the new superintendent select coming in, one of those things that she will have to really push is being able to move those funds. And so we're going to put some purchase orders in the folder for her, and when she comes in, she'll have to move with some that we need to do in terms of contracts before we get price increases. In fact, one of the things that's in there are the floor scrubbing machines for each school. And so the contractor from Centa's called today. He said, "You realize you're gonna get a price increase January 1st. It's not going to be a small one. It's just about the inflation." And so if we can go ahead and get a PO number in his hand, then we can get locked into the prices where we are. And so we spent, what day was that, Dr. Williams? I can't remember. We spent, was it Tuesday? Yeah, we spent all day Tuesday together, along with the principals and the rest of the central office staff going through the ESSR budgets line by line so everyone would know what's in there. I'll give you another example. On one of those lines you will see in that ESSR budget, we had $100,000 for vision contracts and hearing devices, meaning that if a student shows in kid's check that he has a vision problem or a hearing problem, and we're cross-referencing that with a level one or two on his assessment and mom can't get glasses, then Nurse Gray worked with Dr. Bell to pick out the frames and everything. She worked with an auditory clinic so we can go ahead and get glasses and we can get hearing aids for our students so we can overcome whatever barriers there are. So all of those things, as you see, are throughout those ESSR contracts. There were things we could spend money on, there were things we couldn't spend money on. For example, I wanted digital marquees at the front of every school because I said that's a communication tool. Parents pass by, they can see it in lights, school is closed, we have an e-learning day or whatever it is. But the federal guidelines and the state guidelines said no on that. So on that last page of that ESSR two application, you see the things that they said no to. So we have a pretty clear guide as to what our allowable and unallowable expenses are. And so for that reason, the Superintendent of Education is recommending approval of ESSR budgets for expenditure to include ESSR I, II, and III.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we accept the superintendent's recommendation. Any questions? Because we asked the questions before we did. Anyway. All in favor of the motion that it be known by the side of the law? Item F? Vehicle purchases from state vehicles?
I think with the exception of Ms. Campbell, you all were here at the July meeting when we brought the pictures and the specs of the vehicles that we were interested in getting at the time. But honestly, COVID had started to rise again, and this was just not... But honestly, COVID had started to rise again, and this was just not at the top of our priority list. Um, but we have, we have gone back and, um, I have talked, uh, informally to Dr. Williams about vehicles, I've talked to the CSFO about vehicles. And so these vehicle purchases are from the money that we, uh, indicated in here, some rebate funds. Um, and then the COVID-nineteen homeless money is requesting that a, uh, minivan or S U B, uh, is purchased from those funds for the purpose of transporting goods to our homeless population. And so that, we already have a state, uh, requirement for that. So these are the vehicles that are listed. Of course, the superintendent select and the CSFO would have to execute these purchases and go down and speak with the people who are indicated on the contract. So this is a state bid or a state contract that already exists. And because it does, you'll see it has a T-191 number. That means the state has already done all of the bid work for us, so we don't have to go back and rebid these things. And, uh, this bid, uh, expires, uh, it looks like September thirtieth. So it should be good. I don't know how these price fluctuations will work, but this will give them some leeway to go ahead and be able to get vehicle purchases from the state bid list. Therefore, the superintendent of education recommends approval of the following vehicle purchases for the Macon County vehicle fleet from the state bid list at the prices indicated. And I believe you see there, uh, Explorer, uh, van, and a, uh, F-150, uh, truck.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Second.
It has been moved and second that we, um, accept the superintendent's recommendation regarding vehicle purchases. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by the sign of the eye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Item G, USDA meal prices increase.
Hey, the superintendent of education recommends approval of, uh, meal price increases. This is back from August thirtieth, uh, going forward, for the school lunch program. Visitors and adult employees, the current price is three dollars and seventy-five cents, and the price will increase to three dollars and eighty-five cents. This meets the U.S. Department of Agriculture, uh, State Department of Education requirement. We are under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 Pay Lunch Equity Implementation, which means all students in Macon County schools will continue to eat at no charge as the Macon County Board of Education continues its meal participation in the community eligibility program.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we accept superintendent's recommendation on USDA meal prices.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and second that we accept the superintendent's recommendation regarding the increase in meals at the schools. Any questions?
For, um, yes, I have a question. For the adults, will their meal be the same price?
The adults, the, the visitors and adults will go from three seventy-five to three eighty-five. Three dollars and seventy-five cents to three dollars and eighty-five cents.
And for the students?
That all students continue to eat at no charge.
Okay, right, but I thought they still assigned an amount?
Um, no ma'am, they are, they're, it's considered zero, but we cannot code it as free. What, uh, happens in the computer is we still code them as free, reduced, and paid, but that's just in the computer, but we say we all eat at no cost. And, uh, this is the reason that, uh, in Macon County, all students got a, uh, white P-E V T card in their names. Uh, because we are participants in this. And so under the community eligibility program with COVID, there are funds for parents to be able to buy groceries and feed children. In fact, I think the last load was, um, December ninth, and it was four hundred dollars per child, not household, on their, on their food cards.
And have you noticed that, um, uh, the difference it has made in our students, with our students?
Uh, in our students and also in our communities, because people shop local. And so I think it's been all around good for our community based on conversations with our, with our store managers at home and just seeing our families out in our neighborhood stores. And, uh, that's accepted at the Dollar Generals, the, uh, what is it, the Family Dollar? Uh, I'm not sure about Dollar Tree, but both Piggly Wiggly.
But they sell food, it's about food, right?
Yes, uh, so Dollar Tree may, may accept it, but, uh, Family Foods, Piggly Wiggly, and the, uh, and the Meat House. And then in Noticeal, uh, CarMax.
Very good.
Any other question? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of the eye?
Aye.
All right, the motion is carried. Item eleven, policy considerations?
Uh, I don't have any policy considerations at this time, other than, um, because of accreditation, um, I, I, I will just say I advise you all to keep that item, uh, on the agenda, so that when the accreditation team comes, they can see that you review the policies periodically.
All right. Uh, number twelve, dates?
Uh, we are, we are citing, uh, the twenty-seventh right now as that potential date, but, uh, I will be talking to the architect and the State Department, uh, and I will let you know definitely. But please pencil in December twenty-seventh if you can.
At a time, uh...
Mhm, we will let you know a time as well.
All right, your circulations?
You have received, uh, several things under the circulations, uh, tab. You have a continuous improvement plan for each school, uh, that you will need to review. You also have, that should be, uh, twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three academic calendar. That's the first circulation. Uh, the new superintendent will bring back, uh, all of the options, but we got it off the ground, because it takes X numbers of reading, so this can count as one. And then you'll have to do two additional readings, but with those readings, she'll bring input and options. And then C is the MCBOE strategic plan, uh, that is written to go from twenty-one to twenty-six, um, that, uh, will need to have a revisit as you go into the new administration to see tweaks, adjustments, changes, additions, and those types of things.
All right, thank you. And Dr. Brooks, we have one more item here. Uh, we don't have announcements on here, but this came from the NAACP, an urgent nomination endorsement of, uh, Attorney Fred D. Gray, Senior. Are you familiar with that?
Uh, yes ma'am, I, um, I have, uh, seen it. It has been sent out, um, to, uh, our sorority members. It has been sent to a number of the, uh, agencies, uh, as well. So I think this board can, uh, make a determination to, uh, support it or to offer a resolution, uh, either, either would be appropriate. Is there a deadline or recommended time?
They want it by the twenty-first of, uh, December.
Oh, okay, so you will need to...
Do we have time to do a resolution?
Yes ma'am, we can get a, we can get a resolution off. If you would like to, um, take a motion to authorize us to go ahead and get a resolution done, then we can get that done tomorrow.
All right, is there a motion, board members?
Uh, yes, uh, Madam President, I move that we authorize the, uh, superintendent to draft a resolution in support of Attorney Fred D. Gray, Junior?
Senior.
Senior, I'm sorry, for the Spring, Spring Guard Award.
Second?
Second.
It has been moved and second that we, uh, write down, yeah, authorize the superintendent to, um, draft a resolution, uh, for this nominee, uh, to endorse this nominee. Any questions? All in favor of the resolution, let it be known by the sign of the eye?
Aye.
All right. All my hearts are clear, anything else to come before this board?
Yes ma'am, just, uh, one item. Um, we have your Christmas gift this year.
Thank you so much.
It is the new Robert Bruce of Order, twelfth edition, for each of you to read during the holidays. And Attorney Bennett left, but, uh, we did want to offer, again, our condolences to her and the loss of her, um, father recently. And, uh, also to Ms. Love, uh, on the loss of her niece, who was a great teacher here in Macon County Schools.
Thank you so much. Oh, you're not turning.
These people say these good things about you, and you know that they're not just blowing smoke, man.
It just feels like home, like family, like love, a community of support, a community where we're all pulling together for the same goals and prosperity of our citizens and our youth, and it's a great feeling.
What do you say to the parents of the students in this county?
Uh, to the parents, I say, your support is needed for our students to be successful in academics, in the arts, and in athletics. Macon County Schools has a number of opportunities. Take advantage of every one. To our high school parents, I say, make sure your child takes advantage of dual enrollment. It's something I wished we had when I was in school here, but the concept didn't really exist on a wide scale. We now have dual enrollment opportunities for our students with Trenton State, Alabama State, Tuskegee University, Auburn, AUM, Troy, and UAB. Every high school student has an opportunity to go to college while being in high school, and we need to jump on that. Also, parents, yes, your children have homework every night. It may not be from the teacher, but remember, you are always your child's first teacher and largest advocate. So even if they don't bring it home from the teacher, let them read to you. Let them spell their words. If you haven't seen the movie Richard the King or King Richard, I can't remember the title of it, but it is about the dad of Venus and Serena Williams. And you will find that, yes, he pushed athletics, but he pushed academics first. And so we have to be on this dual pathway of making sure our children master their fundamentals in reading and math while supporting them in their other endeavors in which they wish to pursue.
Now, what do you say to the beautiful students?
Students, you are so beautiful. And boy, did I see that today, as all two thousand of you were out at our various schools giving me a salute, band serenades, cheers, shout-outs, um, acrostics, acronyms, and all kinds of things. Guys, you probably hear people tell you the sky is the limit. Well, I'm gonna tell you, that's fiction. There are no limits. You will probably have people to tell you to think outside of the box. My question is, why do you have to have a box? Don't limit yourself. Don't limit your opportunities. You may be young, you may be in preschool, but you can always think about what I want to do and be when I grow up. Always have dreams, always have aspirations. And in whatever decision you make, remember that decision impacts whether or not those dreams come true. I'm just a phone call away.